It is 7 o'clock and it is Tuesday, October 28th, 2014. And this is the Town of Auburn's Planning Board meeting. And I'm calling this meeting to order. Would everybody please stand and salute that little flag up in the corner till we get a big one? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And first thing we have is, no ANRs?
No.
First thing we have is 125 West Street, Attorney Broder. Good evening.
Gentlemen, for the record Larry Broder, I am for Fletcher Tilton. Represent David Pappas who lives at 125 West Street. And we're here tonight to go over preliminary subdivision plan which has been submitted on his behalf. I'm assuming you know David Pappas?
I used to go to the Republican convention with his dad.
And this is Chris McClure and Dennis Rice from McClure Engineering.
Nice to meet you.
Welcome.
So we've submitted a preliminary subdivision plan for what's called Hamlet Estates. It's a five lot subdivision located off of West Street, north of the Massachusetts Turnpike on the west side of West Street. The subdivision is a five lot subdivision on 24 acres. The five lots range in size from two at 1.5 acres, one at 2.4 acres, one at 3.7 acres, and one at 14.4 acres if I remember them correctly. Each of the lots complies with a drainage requirement of 180 feet and the density requirement of 60,000 square feet for the residential area district. The engineering work has been prepared by McClure Engineering. There have been preliminary percolation tests taken on the property. Each of the lots has passed. There's been a review on a preliminary basis with the Conservation Commission. The plan in terms of water was to extend water up along West Street, about 700 miles, 700 miles, 700 feet, south of the project, but because of the paving project that went on on West Street recently, there won't be any cuts in that road for five years, so there'll be wells on the property.
So even though the plan shows the water lines...
It was before, it was, the pavement was relatively recent, that's why I mentioned that specifically.
Okay.
I think, when did the paving came place? Was it a month, two months?
It's in the plan before we were aware of it.
Yep, okay. The project proponent proposes four waivers which we summarized in the submission. The first is a waiver of the fee to administer the waivers that are going to be requested. And then the three substantive waivers which are not, which are minor in nature, we believe. There's a minor road right away with a waiver request at a particular point in the road which Dennis Rice, when he reviews the plan, will go over with you. That's at about Station 5 plus 97. There's a request for a waiver of a portion of the sidewalk which Dennis again will review in detail. And then there's an increase requested in the length of the cul-de-sac from 800 feet to 986 feet. The purpose of the planned submittal is, as with all preliminary plans, to show it to you, get your comments, see if there's issues, the questions you have that we can answer, any issues yet identified that we should address before we go into definitive subdivision plan preparation. And I'll ask Dennis to come up and run through it.
Good evening, Dennis Rice from McClure. Larry's given you a pretty good overview already. We are at, we have looked at various concepts for development of the Pappas property. There is a couple existing non-conforming lots already. We looked at a road that would meet the requirements for 800 feet, but due to the topography and grade and coming in around the overpass to the CSX, it didn't make too much sense. The other option is coming in here, but due to the shape of the land, we need the additional length in the dead end road that we're requesting to develop the lot, the property into five lots. We've done our due diligence and had the wetlands delineated, that's in that color. And ANR has, AMRAID has been filed with the local Conservation Commission. They reviewed the delineation and it's been located by survey and it's represented on the plan. We do show the 50-foot buffer to the wetland by the local conservation and that's in green here. We're proposing five lots, all on subsurface sewerage systems. We've perked the lots in these locations just recently. They all pass with fairly good perk rates. The differences that were requested, I spoke to the length of the dead end road. The grade coming in this way meets all the requirements of the subdivision rules and regulations for the profile. And so, fits in here pretty well. But with, we're budding the right-of-way along the back of these two properties. And their two properties have a slight angle at that point. We could have pushed the road away. We have put the radius at the center line of the road on the other side, but at that angle point, we're missing the width of our road by an inch or two, 49.9 feet I think it is. It's possible we can meet that requirement, but we think it's minor. We'd rather butt the roadway up to the back of those properties. Because these two lots are already developed and this would be either common land with budding properties or a, be part of the open space for the development. There is no lot planned, no house planned on this lot and these are accessed off of West Street. So we didn't feel the need for sidewalk in this area, but that's the reason we show sidewalk from this portion around and back out. It's in front of all the five lots proposed. We plan to meet the stormwater management policy for stormwater. The, it is not very significant on this property. West Street has this drainage system and conveys it other places. CSX has drainage off their railroad in several places, but it doesn't impact this part of the property. So the area, the runoff area for the development is several acres. Should be a handling and sedimentation detention ponds. We'll show them in as preliminary at this time.
What would be the width of the finished road?
It'd meet the same requirements as the subdivision.
What's the...
Pavement width? 24 feet I believe it is. The typical section the plan shows.
What's the queuing, what's the queuing prior to the entrance on West Street?
The queuing.
The car queuing before you hit West Street. It's coming, it looks like it's coming out at a 90-degree angle which is what we basically require. What's the footage between there and the bend?
This bend? I haven't off the top of my head, but this is an 80-scale plan. It's about 160 feet.
That's good. Now what portion of the, what portion of that road, in other words, you intend on putting a sidewalk up the full length of the road?
Up this side of the road, around the cul-de-sac and back here, provide a crosswalk there. Proposed house here, could access to go across the road to the sidewalk. Mainly in consideration of impervious areas.
So Dennis, when you come in on the left, come in off West Street on the left, there's, no, come in the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, on the left, there's a sidewalk all the way up to the cul-de-sac?
Yes, there is.
And then loops around and comes back down to where your crosswalk would be to get them on the other side?
The plan also proposes some excess land to the developer which would go to David Pappas' existing lot. That's now a non-conforming lot. This plan would make that a conforming lot by subdivision rules and regulations. It eliminates two potentially non-conforming lots on West Street where the access wouldn't be as good and site development. This lot through the years, both these lots, there was a taking on West Street. When they approved West Street, they took some of the area out of front of those lots. They're still buildable lots as far as assessed at, buildable lots. And I think they're grandfathered to be built on. But that would eliminate the need to that. Old West Street I think used to go out through here and that's why the property line is here. Even this residence up here, their driveway access off the old West Street. So the access for a lot in here would be poor at best. So we think that's an advantage to eliminate those two non-conforming lots and try and get five bit-sized lots out of them.
Now they're asking for waivers.
All right, so your waivers, you don't want to run?
800 to 936?
Yeah.
I don't see a problem with that. Okay, what about the sidewalk? The sidewalk going down one side? I don't see a problem with that either. What were the other, is there any other waivers on that?
We've received.
I haven't seen in the way.
The road, a couple inches.
Couple inches.
Yeah, right at this one point right here, otherwise the lies would have fit.
I don't, I don't see a problem with that, I'll see other people do.
And that's on the side where we're not proposing a sidewalk. An inch or two isn't going to matter to development.
What's the length of the area that is non-compliant there?
The length of the roadway?
Yeah. The length of the area that's not compliant, is it a five-foot section, 10-foot section?
Oh, we have a small radius curve in here. It may go 20 feet. But it'd go from that maximum of an inch or two and feather out both ways on that curve. So it's a matter of 20 feet, that's an inch or so.
That's the right-of-way?
Yes.
And the road's only going to be 24 feet anyway?
The road's going to be the right, same width anyway.
That's right.
So we're asking for just an angle point here instead of a curve. You can see how flat the property line angle is.
Eric, here's two quick questions that I have for you. Is there a reason why there's the, seems like an arbitrary 800-foot length? Is that fire access? Is that...
I would imagine that it's fire access and maybe access to water. If the, the closest hydrant, if I'm not mistaken, is at the bottom, it's on West Street and it's just south of Hamlet Drive.
Near Hydrant, yeah, over the road, right?
Water doesn't seem to be too big of a problem at the end lots there.
Well, we, don't forget, we did that GEMS project, okay? And we gave them an extension on that cul-de-sac road too, you know?
Sure. Yeah, I just wanted to understand the logic behind it.
Yeah.
And the only other question I have is that kind of last lot out there that is mostly wet and wetland?
This one?
Yeah. I guess I'm just trying to understand the design of that. Is that a requirement to meet dry land or is that just, do you have the extra land here?
Dennis, those driveways that you're talking about where they're going to cross water?
Yeah.
Well, we will be going to CONCON looking for access across wetland at this point to access these two.
What did the Conservation Commission say about that?
We haven't met with them yet. The plan, it's under 5,000 square feet. It's probably only a couple thousand square feet of infiltration. We'd have to file a notice.
So if you got the subdivision and you didn't get the CONCON, you just wouldn't be able to, they'd just be existing lots or a piece of land?
We would plan on filing the notice, the notice and tag when we filed the definitive plan with you. It's a signed tag, usually.
I guess my question then is really more to the CONCON, so, you know.
Yeah.
I don't have any problem with any of the waivers, okay? So, and again, this is, I don't think this even, does this require a vote?
We're not going to vote.
No. This is just a discussion.
They're seeking your feedback.
Yeah. I don't, I don't...
Seriously?
I'm all set. I don't have any problems with it.
Thanks very much.
Appreciate it. Have a nice night. We'll try.
There, next we have Mr. Wade.
Did she give you some paperwork? I thought she was going to give paperwork.
I don't have anything.
We didn't have any paperwork. All we have is the original, the original landscape plan. That's what she said she would go to pull up, so I didn't bring anything. She said she would go to provide it.
Well, you can use, you can go there and use that as a point. I have one, too. I don't have a problem with that.
I've got a large copy over here, too, if anybody wants to look at it.
Eric, could you pull that, could you zoom in on the lot without all that?
Let's see what we can do here.
Yep, that's good. Can you work with that?
Yeah, I can.
I'll try. It's probably what it's going to get.
That's good.
The problem I'm running into is, well, I've got to modify it because I can't put the trees in. I can only put a few in. There are ways to get around it. I will have to reshape the front here. I have ledge, well, originally remarked it here. That ledge starts at the telephone pole and goes all the way. That goes there and then it goes over here. It comes across Route 20 over here and just comes in. And we hit nothing but ledge because we put the gas line in which is over here and we did nothing, hit nothing but ledge. So nothing's really going to grow along here. I can, been looking quite a bit at it, okay? I can shape the bank up a little bit and I think I can put enough in there so I can put the trees in. They would, I was trying to keep everything in line with what I have at Motorsports, but I would have to move them down a little bit in that. They'd all be in line here, okay? But I'd have to move them down. But first I have to see, do some more testing to find out what I'm going to hit for ledge. And then also research some shallow root trees that will stay so I don't put them in and all of a sudden they die and everybody's wondering. And that's the problem I face with the front of the building here. This side over here, they put a, wasn't sure where the electrical was going to come in. Whether just, whether, in the meantime, they have figured out there's a transformer that's going in here. So I'm going to have to change this a little bit also. But when the original plans were set, we didn't know where it was. National Grid finally came in after a year and finally figured out where they're going to go with their transformer. So we do have it, but I would have to change this, you know, here. And that's the problem I'm running into. The other problem I have, if I'm going to reshape the front to get the trees in here, I have grass growing all along here and I don't want to do it this winter where I'm going to have washouts because what's going to happen, then it's going to fill all my underground and I'd rather avoid that. It's not that I'm trying to get out of doing any plantings, I'm just trying to get out of where I don't...
How long has it been since we had the plan and we approved it?
I think over a year.
So you just put the building up?
Yeah, I just put the building up.
That's the second building?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I've had nothing but problems with this, fighting everything that's going on in the town.
Yeah, you changed the whole front of the building, too, huh?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to make it...
It looks much better than it did originally.
Yeah, I'm trying to make it look good. That's what I am. I'm trying to clean up that area. Well, you know, the Petro was in there, then it was Flag Palmer in there. And that's why I was trying to keep it similar to what I have with Motorsports, you know? And that's basically what I did. But I'm trying to dress up the front which I have on Motorsports, but I've got to do some reshape. And I also get it to my site engineer to go over the slope so we won't have problems. And I got to meet with the landscape guy to try to find trees and that's...
Can I make a suggestion? And you guys can do what you want to do, I'm sure, and again, through you. I would make a suggestion, Mr. Wade, that you, you come up with a new plan of attack on both the front landscape and the landscape behind the electrical box.
Yep.
Okay? And why don't you, why don't you send that plan over to Eric?
Eric.
Okay? And...
Now is, Eric, is he taking Adam? Okay, all right, yeah. Because I talked to Adam and he says, well, I have to come to the planning board, you know, make what I...
He's correct in saying, yeah, he's correct in saying that. But the, we understand what's been happening here and that new building just went up, okay? In fact, it's not even...
Finished.
Finished yet. I see a golf place going in there.
Yeah, I'm trying to get my tenants in, okay? But like I said, I'd like to, if I can get a waiver, the tenants would be in there before I totally finish my landscaping. But I don't want to fight runoff. I've got, all my underground is here and I've got underground in the back here and I don't want to fight mud going in that because I spent a lot of money to...
How does the mud get in the underground? You're talking underground wiring and...
No, no, no. Underground, basically what it will do is it will go into my catch basins. My catch basins go into my underground detention ponds.
Oh, that's what you mean by, I think my underground utility.
No, no, it's, because it's, like I said, both areas are sensitive and I've got to, and I want to secure it. And grass grows a lot better in the springtime than it will grow right now. And that's where I have. And by then I have a better picture of what I can do as far as landscaping.
When would you like for the amount of time?
If I could have till June of 2015.
Yeah, I'd like to see him, I'd be all right with that if we need to see plantings, not... If you sense that you're going to have to come back for something different or it's not going to work, you should well know before you come and tell us.
Before I submit what are my final plans, I will know it's going to work. Because when Craig Falkin comes back, I'm going to do more digging out front here once I get everything set. So we can see where the wedge is and what I want to do is going to work. Because I spent a lot of time looking at it and comparing what I have. So when people drive down Route 20, everything looks nice in that section. And I think you can say I've enhanced that section from what was in there.
Well, you're 100% right, okay? Before you took that property over, it was a disaster. And now you've made it into something that's really nice and functional. And the Town of Auburn is getting a lot of taxes out of it, so we're happy about that.
So can I make a recommendation? Kind of synthesizing what I'm hearing here and, you know, I'll include a little of my, just my thoughts, is that we recommend that you return to the board. The board can vote that this is a minor adjustment to the plan. And then after that vote, vote to accept a plan, a new landscape plan that you'll submit documenting the types of trees, how many at the locations.
Right.
Along with, I would say, a schedule of proposed work, timeframe, when he, when you plan to have those in there.
Yeah, we were pretty flexible on the other lot when you did the other building with the planting.
And it turned out pretty good.
And it turned out pretty good, too. Well...
Thank you. It'll probably be a month, month and a half before I can do it. Because like I said, I've got stuff to do, but I will know when I give you the final plan. That's what will be there.
Sure. Yep. So as far as we're concerned, this is the landscape plan and until, you know, he returns to amend the plan.
Now do I give it to you, the new one, and then, or do I come before the board again?
Give it to him so that we can see it.
Just give it to him.
Okay, all right. No, no, I just want to know, you know, which I'm doing.
And you, you will, it will involve you coming to the board?
Yes, okay.
And so, just so you can hear their vote that they are agreeing that this is a minor modification and then you guys can discuss the plan that you propose.
All right, okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
But you don't have to come back here until we have that plan and...
Okay, all right. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Next, cistern language?
Cistern language, yes. Okay, so I have some information for you. At this point, everyone should be on the same page with the latest draft proposal that was made by Chief Coleman. And I've got, Chief Coleman spoke with the developer, just, the request, specifically GMU request about the prices. He spoke with a developer and I've spoken with two. One who has gotten back to me and one who I'm still waiting response. The developer that Chief Coleman spoke with said that the cisterns, the cost is about $2 to $3 per gallon. So depending on the size, that's sort of like the ratio for the cost.
Well, that would be figured out, that would be figured out on 20,000 gallons, okay? Because that, in the cistern, in the cistern page that he wrote out, okay?
It's a minimum of 20,000.
He specifically said minimum of 20,000.
So what he said, to purchase and install a 20,000-gallon tank would be about $40,000. So that's purchase and install. And that is if the developer doesn't install it themselves. So if they subcontract the work to have somebody else install.
Well, and you can see now why I question that.
Yeah.
Okay, because originally, this was a simple $20,000 installation or a $15,000 installation.
Now it's 60.
And now it's 40 to, it could be 40 to $60,000.
Yeah. Two times three is six.
Yeah.
60,000.
Well, it depends on how large it would be.
If it's 20,000 gallons, it's 40,000.
Well, he said its cost is $2 to $3 a gallon.
Oh, $2, $2 to $3?
Again.
Well, that's 60,000 bucks, so...
So on a 20, it could be 40 to 60.
That's right.
On a 30, it'd be...
That's right.
I spoke to John Stelmac who is currently working on a project in Leicester where he's installing cisterns in a subdivision there. He got quotes from two companies for the materials. So from Old Castle Prefab Concrete, he's doing a 15,000-gallon. So just keep that in mind. It's a $17,000 for the materials. So it's for a 15,000-gallon tank. From L&amp;L Precast which is in Oxford, their quote, their local is 21,000. So he got two quotes there for pricing materials. Now he said, you want to keep in mind that there's a cost to core the material because they need two pipes on the top, a crane rental for installation, to dig the hole, to prep the hole, a four-guy crew to assemble the tank, to backfill, install the pipes and the covers on top, and then connect the pipe into the street drains. He said that's about $10,000 total for the work. So his 15,000-gallon tank in Leicester is going to cost him 27,000.
27,000 plus the land.
And, well, the land, I spoke to him about the land. He said in his plan, he has a dedicated fire easement for the cistern. And so it's 20 feet off the right-of-way of the road. So it abuts the right-of-way of the road. And it's a 20-foot by 40-foot piece of land. And so in this situation, they created a fire easement. It's typically built into the right-of-way or right off the right-of-way of the road. And typically, I guess, at the entrance area of a subdivision where you're coming in off the road.
One thing that wasn't brought up, and I think it should be brought up, is the fact that in this particular case, we know that the developments have no water, correct? In other words, there's no town water going to that development. That's why they require the system. And there's no fire hydrant close by, so that's why they require the system. Now, that being the case, how are you going to fill the system? You're going to have to put, you're going to have to put an artesian well of some sort there to run and fill that system.
Or a catch basin system.
Yeah, the way they're envisioning this working is to have water runoff from the street.
From the road.
Fill the tank.
So there must be a filtering process.
There's a filtering process which he describes in here. And then there's, so a screening of sediment that would take it out. And then... Um, and then in addition to the fire department would, it sounds like annually go in and kinda disturb that. They clean out the, they clean out the system and then they would run through the pump, uh, run the pump. To stir up the water to try to get out any of that debris.
And it is, the, the language as it is, is for subdivisions of eight lots and more. So we're talking, you're sort of like those longer streets. You know, where it's an area like you pointed out, you know, where there isn't access to, to town water.
Well, a couple, couple things that, first of all, the, the cost is definitely more than was represented originally.
Originally.
Presented.
Okay.
Certainly more.
And, and I appreciate that it's a, um, you know, eight or more lots and that's a relatively large, larger subdivision. That may be a number though, that we wanna revisit to figure out if that is the right number, if it should be something higher. I had a couple comments on the, um, the plan itself. The first one being, I think, you know, the board had made it really, uh, made it clear that we wanted to have it intentionally in here. Say something along the lines of, you know, entirely at the purview of the planning board. So that if there is a smaller development or if there is an area where there's a wetland right next to it, and that seems to make sense. Which is specified in here that that is an acceptable, um, method. That, you know, we could have some leniency and I think that just makes sense to be explicit about that in here. The other, um, it was a little inconsistent as to where the, um, the cistern needs to be located, I think, I think fourteen hundred feet, I might have that number wrong, of the center line of all the lots. But is that where the fill pump is? Is there an opportunity to extend that out? Yeah, I wasn't really all that clear on that. So if you have a, a really, a small subdivision with a lot of frontage, I wanna make sure that we're just not making, you know, a smaller developer have to put in multiple.
So is that, is that be that working here?
We should leave some of that to our discretion, depending upon what the size of the subdivision is. And did you say, cause I missed the meeting before, did you say that this was up to our purview irregardless?
That's right.
So as the language.
We're just not gonna do it.
As language is, we, we would need, we would need it to, to be amended. As it is, it doesn't read that way.
Yeah, it's, it's intended, I mean, inherent, I think, in the rules that we can, we can define them, but I think.
That has to be part of the, that has to be part of the subdivision, uh, of, of the cistern, uh, um, rules and regulations. The very end of it should say.
Yeah, would you mind pitching to me a, some verbiage for that?
Well, the, the, the application of these rules and regulations, okay? Would be entirely on the vote.
The discretion of the.
The discretion of the planning board and a vote thereof. Does that sound?
Yeah, and maybe with, I mean, I don't know if this needs to be in there or if we just do this, but, uh, maybe with a recommendation that they come and talk to us during the discussion phase before they plan all this stuff out.
At the preliminary phase.
That we could, we could work with them on, you know, what, what is an appropriate way to kind of manage safety with.
If we pass it.
Yeah.
That's right.
Now, do you want to specifically, as, at the language that, that you just presented? You would vote to, to waive the requirements or you, is that sort of what, what we're getting at here?
Yeah, we, we.
So the applicant wouldn't necessarily come.
No, we wouldn't waive the requirements and we would be, uh, voting on the requirement.
So voting whether or not to require it.
To require it, that's correct.
Okay.
We're not waiving it.
No.
Okay. And so it wouldn't necessarily be something that say an applicant would come in as these gentlemen did. Request a waiver from the planning board for relief from the requirements of a cistern.
Well, I think, in my mind, I think it kinda has to be for process. Although if it's not a waiver, then there's no requirement for them to do it in any extent. But I think, but, so I, I guess I would say that we.
Maybe we leave it as a requirement.
But I think the board's on the same page that we'd be pretty flexible about when and how we did that.
We have it as a requirement and then we, like you said.
Yeah.
Depending on what the subdivision is, if it even needs it. We just, if it's one that's gonna require it, then we vote whether or not we're gonna waive it or, or require it.
Do you want that to be something that the, that the developer slash applicant initiates?
Requests from us.
So they re, they would come to you, say they, they're doing a ten, a ten lot subdivision. So they say in their language that we're requesting, you know, a waiver for relief from.
And then we discuss it and that's when we might apply the waiver.
I'm just asking because I think that.
Whatever you wanna call it.
That process sounds different than what I'm hearing from you and just to be sure I'm hearing correctly. Is that it wouldn't, if the applicant say they don't request the waiver, the board would still vote. In which case I would say, why wouldn't you wanna put it on the applicant to make that?
It doesn't, you know, it's up to the board. I just made a suggestion.
Sure.
If there's a better suggestion.
Yep.
I would entertain that a hundred percent.
We'll put a little bit of everything together and get it.
So it's kind of a starting point and.
Also Eric, write something up. We don't have to, as far as I'm concerned, we don't have to pass this today or tomorrow.
Right.
Or in the future.
Write something up that you, you think is applicable and then we'll decide on it.
Right, we'll, we'll figure out if it's all right.
Okay.
As a board.
I mean, for fifty years that I've been here, we got twenty eight houses in my street, no town water. We got nine swimming pools and for fifty years it's been, if you're having a fire, which we have never had. You dump your hose in the swimming pool and fill it up later. All of a sudden, we're gonna have.
One of the biggest, one of the biggest things in Auburn, okay? One of the biggest things, uh, that I balked at a little bit on this is the fact that out of the chief's mouth himself, he said that they've got a four and a half minute response time to a fire. How much of a fire can we get in four and a half minutes?
A lot.
Unless, unless the thing is completely engulfed by that and, and, and then, and then what you do is bring a bulldozer over there and put it in the foundation. But I'm just saying that that, you got such a fast response time in Auburn, okay? According to the fire chief, that if somebody, you know, spills fat all over, grease all over the stove and there's a fire. It only takes them four and a half minutes to get there.
And you don't need a cistern to control that.
I think, um, what I was gonna, you know, first of all, I, I think I was very much opposed to the original proposal that came in here. Um, very much opposed to the residential sprinklers, that that was completely overkill. Um, that's been taken off the table. Um, I was originally opposed to the way that the cistern language was. Uh, I think the board knows they forwarded the language off to the Home Builders Association to get their comments on it. Forwarded that to the chief, the chief reviewed it and, you know, I think made some substantial, um, you know, concessions to make that a little bit more development friendly. Um, I also appreciate that, um, you know, developers who are in an area that has water would have to hook up to that. And there's a cost associated with that and there's also a value to safety. Um, the chief had said something in his first thing, I don't remember the exact numbers, but there's a certain amount of gallons that are required to put out a fire and they just, it takes like three truckloads or something like that for them to do that. So I get, I get the value of it. I think though, you know, we should, I don't know if eight's the right number, um, you know, for the, for the units there. I'm not, not opposed though to putting it in as eight and then having the board have the ultimate discretion to be flexible about that, depending upon the project and the circumstances. The other pieces that I don't think he addressed in here were, um, the, um, details around the long-term ownership and maintenance and control. Um, that I would assume there has to be, and this should be included as part of the right away of the roadway. And then the town is then the owner or maintainer of that road. And then also the long, and it should be, I think, more explicit in here that they're the long-term maintainer of the, um, the tanks. And their condition and their maintenance and all those things so that it doesn't end up on the residents who buy into this project. It's cause the developer will be long gone.
Right.
Um, I think if the town wants to have this, similar to the way they maintain the public, you know, the water system for a fire, they should also have to maintain this.
And do we need to hire new people to do this? Do we have to have new people with health insurance, which is fifteen to twenty thousand dollars a year, plus retirement, plus.
I imagine following.
Well, to me, if, if they gotta, you know, the town's gonna assume, when I think about the town assuming the responsibility to maintain them long-term. I don't, I'm not sure, I don't think I agree with that because, and I don't know how you do it, but why, why should they? If the develop, if we determine that it would need the cistern, unless that developer, we need, we determine it needs a cistern. Because it's, and then it's inadequate, and if it doesn't have it, it's inadequate to be done as a subdivision. You just don't build it.
You just don't build it.
You can't build something everywhere just cause you got a certain sized piece of land. Okay? So maybe you'd have to have the developer say, if he does wanna come in, we, we are requiring a cistern. And you're gonna have to contribute something, like the, the cost of it plus fifty thousand dollars. If you wanna build on this piece of land that normally wouldn't be allowed to be built on.
Could, could I just, maybe at least as I'm thinking about it, sort of pitch some of my, not pitch, but just put out there some thoughts? I think maybe it, it could be helpful to think of it as something similar to like the sewer utilities. If they're, the builder is responsible to construct the road and that includes the utilities. And then when the town assumes that, or determines that the road has been built to its, you know, specs. And then accepts the road, then accepts the responsibility utilities as well. So in a sense, you know, say there, there are these catch basins that are catching the runoff and then it feeds into the cistern. It is sort of a part of that road system, you know, and, and even in this language. Nobody has commented on this yet, not, I don't know if I'm opening a can of worms by pointing it out, but there is language about, about a surety for the cisterns themselves, which would be an additional bond that the developer would, would, or, you know, a performance guarantee that the, that the developer would.
For how long, yeah.
Exactly.
See, all I was saying with my part is I just don't think that the town, uh, or the other residents who already have available water and don't need this system, perhaps, should be paying to, to make it a doable project for the developer. Who, if it, if he can't make it work and he's not willing to assume the cost of the cistern and a, a fifty thousand dollar thing, you, you can't get it all cause you don't know what's gonna happen, but some amount of money that goes into a town fund that's used to work on those.
Just to maintain systems.
To maintain systems. Cause why should anybody, why, you know, if my neighbor wants to put in a swimming pool and he has to, why would I wanna pay for that? You know? I'm not enjoying a swimming pool or anything.
I get, I get the, I get the concept. I, I, and I really don't wanna put additional burden on the town, very much opposed to that.
I don't wanna put an additional burden on the, on the people that are buying the houses either, to be honest with you. The town, the, listen, big brother's in your pocket enough, okay?
Yeah, well, I guess my, my counter to that was, my concern would be, um, you know, the fire chief seems to wanna do this, seems to think we can staff this without additional. But, you know, I think we need more feedback from him on that. My concern about having the developer be responsible for it long-term is just the practicality of.
Following up on that.
If the developer, you know, he's finished with this project, he, I, I find it hard to believe he's actually gonna follow through on maintaining this. And then what's gonna happen is when there's a house fire, they're gonna go to use the cistern and it defeats the purpose. Cause the developer didn't, you know, maintain it. And I think condo association, similar to things don't wanna work either. So I think that's, that is a, a major question, you know? We talk about costs for construction, I think the cost for maintenance are another piece, um, that we should likely get.
The maintenance in perpetuity, that it's just when it continues. So how do we establish a fee that it goes into? You can't get it all, but some might require nothing and some may require something.
Right, cause the surety in here is, is five thousand per ten thousand, five thousand dollars per ten thousand gallons. So on a twenty or thirty thousand dollar tank, you really only have ten or fifteen thousand dollars. And it can be released after the first year. It's really intended to be something to ensure the construction is done right.
Right.
So, um, I don't know that that's a solution.
I think we need a little more work on it.
What more?
It doesn't hurt, doesn't hurt to talk like this, cause you think of things.
Right.
You never have to be afraid of the can of worms. You gotta listen to everything.
And what are our fire statistics? What are our fire statistics? How many houses that we had burned down?
So I think, you know, what's helpful is having some, some feedback to, to go, if we, if we wanna work on this more. Then to have some, um, some, I guess, good critical feedback. So what I'm hearing from you is, um, you want that, some language that the board can waive these requirements. And we want some clarification in the language as to the long-term.
That we can unconditionally waive them.
Unconditionally.
Meaning it's not subject to anyone else. It is solely at the purview and determination of the planning board.
So similar to, to the waivers that you, I mean, I know this is just preliminary, but similar to that, that you're just able to waive it. And that is, and I guess what you're saying is that you don't wanna have to get the fire departments.
That's correct.
Well, anybody, anybody, if there's somebody said, oh, well, you know, we might need, the conservation commission might wanna talk about this cause it's a lot of issue or something like that, whoever it might be.
Okay.
That it's just solely at the discretion of the planning board.
Sure. And then in, in the language. You did say that. In the language, if there's clarification on the long-term maintenance of the cisterns. And so, uh, I'm hearing sort of mixed review on, on who that maintenance, maintenance would be. So what would be a satisfactory way for this?
I think maybe you can throw it back to the fire chief and get some more feedback from him.
Okay.
As to how that should be done and, um.
And then finally, I'm, I'm hearing, um, concern on the cost for, for the future maintenance. So it's, we're not talking just about the responsibility, but how is this funded if the town?
And I'd kinda like to hear from, I don't know if the town administrator wants to weigh in on that, um, as well, just to make sure that we're not obligating.
The town.
The town. Um, and I appreciate the, the word of, you know, the fire chief and his comments, but, um, you know, he's not as intimately involved in the overall budgeting for the entire town as he's just his department, so.
Expanding the fire department, that's about.
Send it, wind it back to Eddie Kasonovich.
Would, um, would sewer departments thoughts on this be helpful or?
I don't know that it's relevant.
No, I don't think it's a sewer.
No.
No way.
I kind of related to that though, I, I comment that it talks about, uh, requiring just a building permit. And I didn't know if it would require a plumbing permit, if that's something.
Till, for those lines? For the lines from the cistern into a, whatever the existing drainage system is.
Well, from the drainage system into the system with the filtering.
Okay.
Yeah, that would, I think that'd be part of the application and the building inspector should be looking at that.
Well, yeah.
You know, saying if a cistern is in order, then it would be subject to whatever.
So drain layers license, should, should it require a drain layers license?
Yeah.
Just think, wanna know that to understand again that total cost.
Okay.
All right.
I appreciate the feedback and I'll pass it on.
Sorry, a couple of quick, uh, other comments. It specifies in here that a man-made, um, detention pond can't serve as, um, you know, an acceptable alternative. And I was just trying to understand why that's the case. Um, if it's, you know, as long as it has a certain amount of standing water that's in it, that's just, you know, appropriate for that.
Man-made?
Um, yeah, so they're talking about having a detention pond.
Detention ponds, they're talking about detention pond.
Building one that holds the water.
Well, acting, acting as a, a system.
So, you know, it says a, you know, a natural pond could do that. Why couldn't a man-made pond that was engineered to hold at least twenty thousand gallons and then, you know, additional charge at a rain event? Why wouldn't that be acceptable?
Would, would, would a man-made detention pond always have water in it?
Right, it's, that, that's.
That's the question I guess for the engineer, but.
Okay.
More often than not, no.
Okay.
And there was also.
Unless you could bring it in from somewhere, there was a brook, you could divert it and just fill it up. And then it's got a, an emptying capacity where it goes over a certain thing and it just has an outfall up at that height where it relieves it and keeps it at thirty thousand gallons or something and.
Yeah.
And then you got stagnancy too.
I just thought that might be a cheaper alternative for, you know, some developers, they're already building detention ponds. Maybe if they oversized that a little bit.
Yeah.
And it was able to hold that, it could be a, you know, viable alternative. And then the last thing was, um, the Ballard specification in here says that they're supposed to be eight feet in length with a minimum of forty-two inches above grade. And that just seemed kinda overkill. Besides seeing, it, yeah. Is that normal construction?
What diameter?
It's a six inch diameter steel concrete filled tube, um, eight feet in length, a minimum of forty-two inches above grade.
So you're sinking about five feet underground probably.
Four and a half under and, you know, four up or something like that.
Yeah.
Four and a half to five.
About that.
And the, the concern is probably, you don't wanna bump it with a fire truck, so you want it to be pretty strong. Just that, I didn't know if that was the standard.
Yeah, four and a half under, three and a half above. Well, that's good because they, you can, if something big hits them, they can knock them out of the way real easy.
Okay.
Okay. We have signing?
We do have some signatures. So we've got a decision to extend the special permit for the open space development. so we've got a decision to extend the special permit for the open space development for Mr. Jim. You guys have pens? I have some pen. Now, since Wendy voted on that last, at the last meeting, she's not here, I need to obtain her signature, is that correct?
Have her come in, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if they got three, I don't know.
Yeah, going for an email, it's, it's, it's.
Got fire? Okay, special permit extension.
That's who you'd like to be. That's who you'd like to be.
Oh, wait, he doesn't recognize his name.
Well, I looked at, couldn't see where the thing was. It wasn't, it wasn't on the left, it was on the right.
How come you're on the right and the rest of us are on the left?
Wendy's on that side as well. I don't know why.
That goes with it. And?
And then you have the sand them. So here's, that's for the Mylar and then there's the additional paper copies over there.
You gonna put the date or you'll date it?
Well, I assume, do we date it this date?
Are, are dated it?
Oh, all right, I didn't see it.
Okay. Um, we do have some, some, at least, uh, I wouldn't call it necessarily new business, but it's something that, that would be helpful to talk about. Um, the November eighteenth meeting is gonna be canceled because of that, the special town meeting that was called last night for the same date.
What's that special town meeting for?
It's to discuss the post-property. So, um, we, we can't hold our scheduled November eighteenth planning board meeting. So do we wanna move it to another day in November? So we can still have one meeting in November and one in December?
You know something? I don't have a problem, uh, doing any of that, okay, 'cause I'm basically retired. So you'd have to check with the other members. If the other members, whatever they decide to do is okay, I, I can be, I can be.
Thank you, sure.
I thought the problem with that was the election day fell on one and then the holiday fell on another, that.
So, so elections certainly does fall on one. So the following week, I think, is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, because Thanksgiving's always on a Thursday, is that correct?
Yep.
So that's kinda up to you guys. I can be here.
So the special town meeting is when? The eighteen?
The eighteen.
Oh, boy.
Thanks, Jim.
Out in Springfield.
I'll say this, we have, um, in A and R, we have a, a special permit for an earth bill, which is a site, requires a site plan, so that's a review. And we have, um, a site plan approval for the, uh, mall, the Shell, for the controlled natural gas. Um, so there are some items that I've already kind of been scheduling hearings for on, on that date. So it's not like there isn't a lack of agenda. So we can just move it all to the December meeting and I'm happy to do that.
What is it that triggers the U S F L removal? Was it five hundred yards?
Greater than five hundred cubic, uh, yards.
If somebody's bringing in or removing more than five hundred yards.
Yeah, and this gentleman is building a house on, on Elmwood, F forty-six Elmwood, and he's got a slope from six million.
That's, that, that, yeah, that's that one that goes way down and the house just goes like that.
Right. That, that's eighty-eight, that's the town bill.
That town bylaws is okay.
This is another on Elmwood.
Allowed him to do it.
Yeah. These developers on Elmwood are.
We couldn't, we couldn't refuse that. That was because he met all of.
Well, he also, one of those houses.
There's no grade.
You come out the back corner and you're supposed to have fill up to a, you know, certain way and stuff like that and that clearly wasn't there.
Yeah, he, so he's in the process of, he's gonna be filing for, for that permit as well. This is another, another guy who's, he's down the hill closer to Southbridge Street. On the left, you'll see a guard rail with an open lot and, um, it is still significant, it's not a cliff like at the top, but it's still a significant slope. He's gotta put in retaining walls. Um, and so he, they just submitted the site plan today.
Are, are any of those folks planning on starting construction in December?
I could ask. I don't know. All I'm seeing.
The eleventh is Veterans Day too.
The eleventh is Veterans Day, so we're closed.
So you have the fourth, the eleventh, the eighteen.
So we can't do the eleventh?
Nope.
You got road, you, you got another thing here too, I think. You got road acceptance plan for sand them.
We did, uh.
We did that.
Oh, you did that.
That's the one we signed.
Okay, good. All right, so that's all set.
So I'm fine with moving it all to December. December might be a little heavy because we only have one meeting, but.
What's the date in December?
I don't remember off the top of my head.
Let's take a peek.
I'm happy to.
I have the ninth, it's the second Sunday, the second Tuesday, yeah. The ninth and.
The twenty-third is two days before Christmas, so I'm assuming that's.
Wow.
And the thirtieth is.
You could move it to the, I mean, if, it's already scheduled for the ninth, why not just keep it? So you wanna move all in November to the ninth and December?
Yeah, we could do that.
And we won't, we won't meet in November.
Do you have a problem with that?
I mean, no, I just, I'm trying to respond to the needs of the applicants. I don't think anybody's really.
There's nothing.
I mean, every, everyone says, says, we wanna get this in going as fast as possible. Now, I don't know what, what their plans for, for construction, breaking ground are, so, you know.
Would you guys, if there was some.
So what were the ones again? Can you, excuse me?
If there was somebody who, you know, talked to Eric and said, hey, I really wanted to start digging December first or something like that, would you guys meet on a Wednesday or something like that?
I don't have a problem doing that. It's just, it's just you guys, okay? As long as there's three members, okay, if you, three members that wanna, wanna make, you know, plans to come here.
We do have, the, the two site plans require, uh, a, uh, public hearing. So we do have to advertise them two.
Which ones?
Two weeks in advance and that's the, the Shell on the corner of Milbury and Washington.
What does he wanna do? Put a, a gas storage tank in there to fill up gas, uh, twenty-pound cylinders?
He does.
Yeah, that can wait a, a little bit. That's, I don't think.
And then it's, it's a house, uh, a gentleman who owns a lot and he wants to build a house. It's requiring an earth bill permit.
And where's that one?
And that's on Elmwood.
That's the cliff one.
Yeah, that's the cliff. That's the cliff one. The one at the bottom on Elmwood on the left, that.
That's, that's the one. The cliff one, he, he hasn't filed yet. Forty-six Elmwood.
Yeah, what is, um.
So we had the eighteenth, yeah, so when's Thanksgiving? The twenty-seventh?
Yeah.
And so it's twenty-fifth off the table, just to be clear?
Yeah.
Yeah? No good. Okay. So I don't think we really have an option.
Uh, you could do the twelfth.
Oh, right, we could do, uh.
Coming on a Wednesday?
A Wednesday and we can still advertise, um, I would, I would suggest the nineteenth then. So that will give us ti, two weeks to still advertise those.
Yeah, I got a, I got a project in Westfield that day.
Do you? Okay.
On the nineteenth, Paul? Oh, we can't do it. You can't do it on the twelfth?
Could you get here for the?
Yeah.
Of course. The twelfth is.
I don't, I don't care what, when, okay, it, it, but certain people can't do it. That's our, as long as there's three members here.
I mean, I could do the twenty-fifth. I could do the twelfth, I could do the twenty-fifth, either one.
I can either, I, I can do either two. Twelfth. And Paul, if you can't.
Three for the twelfth, but.
I was gonna say, if you can't, you know, just get one other member.
Yeah, if I, I, I can make it back, I hope.
On the twelfth and?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought the nineteenth was the one.
No, the twelfth.
The nineteenth is the one where I, I would have trouble getting back from Westfield.
The nineteenth, but the twelfth you could.
Twelve, I'm free.
You have a problem with the twelfth?
I, I can do either.
I'd say the twelfth is, the twelfth is good.
Yep.
Okay. Let's do that and we'll get rid of those, you know, we'll give those people.
Little bit of chance.
Yeah, the benefit of the doubt. Therefore, if they're gonna start, they're gonna make, they.
Right, okay.
And let them know we're holding special reasons for it.
Be able to.
Uh, sorry, do we, can, can we get a room here on Wednesdays? Is there?
That's a great question. Um, let me.
Well, there's someplace in here we can meet.
Who else is upstairs? Upstairs, except you can't tell them, I said upstairs.
Well, sometimes you can use, I think, the select.
The CBA, what day did it? They meet on a Thursday.
They meet on a Thursday.
I hate to be a pain in the ass, but I'm looking at the calendar. Tomorrow's the twenty-ninth and that, I just said ass on TV. Tomorrow's the twenty-ninth.
You said it twice.
We would have to have the advertisements published tomorrow and that's just not.
Possible.
Possible. So we can't.
If Ronnie can't do the twenty-fifth, could you guys do the twenty-fifth?
I can.
Two days before Thanksgiving, but I could, I could do that.
I mean, put it on, put it on and if I can be here, I'll be here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so let's go to the twenty-fifth. I'm sorry to belabor that after all that discussion.
Yeah, don't worry about it.
All right, so we'll reschedule for the twenty-fifth.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Wait, what about approval minutes?
Yeah. Minutes, minutes, minutes. We're gonna approve the minutes.
I'm eager to get out too, though.
The fourth need?
Yeah, last, last meeting's minutes. We can approve them at the next meeting too, if you wanna do that.
Well, we have them here.
Right here.
One, two, three, we got three people.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the fourteenth.
I second it. We may, may.
Any questions? I entertain the motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
To accept the minutes for the fourteenth.
Jonathan's the only one that can second.
Um, I'll make a second as long as you, uh, promise to fix my last name in section two.
Come on.
To not be multiple levers.
I have been.
What's your name, huh?
Barring that, I will, uh, I'll second.
It's something about your name.
I know.
It wasn't like.
That's really all I look.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying. I gotta abstain.
And we had another one that we didn't approve last time.
No, we, we approved them all.
Did we?
Yeah, we're good.
All right, now make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, good.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's get out of here.
Okay.